All right, good morning. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Today is September 19. There we go, September 19. I will, uh, call the roll, you Kelly first. Yes, I'll turn it over to the director.
Good morning, everyone. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law and section 101.021 of the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conduct their meetings in a manner modeled after Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusals from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raised hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being live streamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Proper channels for comments are listed below. Communication with members of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by the Wednesday noon deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to any scheduled meeting. Proper channels for public comment include sending an email to the cityplanning@clevelandohio.gov address with a comment or a letter, calling and or leaving a message at 216-664-2210, or sending a letter or dropping off comments at City Hall 501 Lakeside Avenue Suite 5, sorry, 601 Lakeside Avenue Suite 501, Cleveland, Ohio, 44114. Our meeting rules and procedures are that the chair will call each agenda item and then each applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentation. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning staff to summarize design review advisory committee recommendations if applicable and any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair and any individual providing public comment is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request a recommendation from staff if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and project review. Any commission member except the chair may make a motion at any point after an agenda item has been called.
Thank you so much, Director. Evelyn, may I call the roll call?
Anthony?
Present.
Luke?
Present.
Curry is not present. McCray Scott?
Present.
Sergeant is not present, and Slife.
Uh, we'll need a motion to approve the September 5th, uh, Planning Commission minutes, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
You, roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
And Slife.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, welcome everyone again to our Planning Commission meeting this Friday, September 19th. Our first item up is a lot split consolidation at 2439 Tremont Avenue. Uh, do we have the project representative here or online?
Yes.
Come up, sir. Um, come here and then, uh, if you can just pull the mic closer to you and hit the button to make it green and then I'll swear you in. Thank you. Do you saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, but for this matter now in hearing under penalty, excuse me, penalty of perjury?
I do.
Awesome. And Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there a presentation from staff? I'm sure, okay.
Hi, sir.
All right, so this is typically something, uh, the architect that I work with would do, so I apologize for any, uh, missteps and formality. This is not my typical forte. Um, we own a couple of adjacent properties on the corner of Jefferson and Tremont. And what we are looking at right now is a proposed, um, lot split. We'll get to the actual site survey in a bit, but you can see, um, up top, uh, in the far right corner, there is an existing structure. Uh, that is a four-unit building that we renovated, uh, back in 2021 to 2022. Uh, beautiful historic building, uh, that was a formal pastoral residence for one of the, um, church leaders of a local parish. Uh, in the back is a vacant lot. There used to be a structure there, I believe. I'm told it was a brick bakery uh, that was demolished before we bought the, uh, property. So, uh, it's vacant land now. My wife and I, who've been developing the property immediately to the north, to the top of the screen, and then own the property, um, immediately also to the north of the lot, um, are planning to put a single-family home there. Um, so that's the sort of overview. If we go on to the next page, okay, this is just a little bit more detail about, uh, where this property is situated. Uh, again, we own the property in front, uh, the property to the north towards Jefferson, uh, and the property also to the north towards Jefferson, uh, where the vacant lot is. Um, it's a proposed three-story, single-family residence, uh, all above grade, uh, with a, um, garage and a rooftop. And we've been before the, um, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals for various, um, exemptions in regards to setbacks. Uh, this is some photos for context, uh, of the, uh, surrounding area. Um, you can see, um, bottom left, those are some new builds that were previously built in fairly, um, tight circumstances. I believe there's four on that back lot, um, and they are directly, uh, behind another existing home. So it'll be a similar configuration, just with less density on the back lot. Um, I think we can go to the next slide. Okay, this is the, uh, driveway. Uh, the brick home on the left is the one we own. Uh, and then the, if you look at the picture to the bottom right, that's also our property uh, with the fence, the green home, uh, that faces, uh, Jefferson. Um, the proposal here would create, um, there's currently, uh, two separate lots. The issue that we're having is that when we did the initial survey, uh, the proposal was to consolidate the lots. Um, the whole time I was thinking, oh, this is gonna be difficult when we go to finance this project. And then I started talking to lenders and they said, well, you know, if you have an existing mortgage on the front house and it gets consolidated, it, it gets confusing as to where, what we hold and what they hold. And so we realized that we need to keep the property separate, but to accommodate, uh, the zoning, uh, board, we needed to enlarge the back parcel. So what we're effectively doing is co-opting from, uh, the front parcel, some square footage of land, and giving it to the back parcel and then adding on an easement, uh, for access through the drive to the back lot. Uh, so that's effectively what this shows. Uh, there will still be ample parking, uh, for the units of the gray building. Um, this is all just the layout of the home. I, I don't know how interested you all are in that. And now here we are with the actual, uh, survey that McDean put together, um, with the proposed new lines. Uh, so if you look at the second from the right, the far back lines, there's one on the far right side and the second line up, that would be the existing, um, uh, parcel. Um, it's very small. And so we, we're proposing to move it up to effectively the next full line or the third sort of fourth full line, third full line, fourth line, whatever, um, where it says new divi- uh, division line. Um, and then the concrete, uh, driveway is there and we're granting an easement from the, uh, front parcel to the back parcel so that there's, uh, access, uh, to the driveway. I guess I can pause there. I think that's the nuts and bolts. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Mr. Nance, job well done.
Thank you.
Very clear and, and really well delivered, so.
I appreciate it.
You should, uh, you should quit your day job and show others how to do this. Well, I think you should keep your day job.
Should be at a jury trial in Florida right now.
Okay.
But they, they've exempted me. I have two very small children under two, uh, so my wife is thrilled that I won't be gone for two months.
Okay.
Fair.
Um, um, Madam Chair, I believe this is appropriate. It, it appears that it's really consistent with the typology and the neighborhood and the easement's intact, so I think they checked all the boxes, so I would move to approve the lot consolidation as presented.
We have second?
Second.
Evelyn, call the roll, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
And Slife.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
All right, we're moving on to design review, starting with the Far West Design Review District. Uh, we have property at Rocky River Drive. Uh, do we have the project representative Larson Architects present in person or online?
Okay, online? If you can hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Woo! First hurdle, yes.
Awesome.
Uh, yes.
Director. Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Certainly. I'm Jim JP Patachek with Larson Architects, uh, representing the Al Al Mary Mosque, um, for their proposed, uh, expansion. And what we're, uh, what we've been asked to do both by local, uh, design review and sort of in consideration for kind of this project as it's evolved over time is to maybe help, uh, start with just kind of crafting, you know, for informational purposes at this point, uh, sort of a master plan. What is the broad vision of, of this, yeah, along Rocky River Drive? So functionally, that was, that was the start. Um, this is, I, I will say openly, a, a, still a bit of a work in progress. Um, we're still tinkering at the edges of, of this, but this tries to capture from a big picture, uh, uh, perspective, kind of what's being intended for some kind of history to date of property acquisition and then kind of how this might evolve over, over time, looking back and looking forward.
Awesome. Thank you. And just for the record, just to reflect that this is, uh, for information only, this presentation today. Um, and commissioners, I would direct your attention to the agenda where you can see some more detail, um, where the staff provide some information. Um, but we can go ahead and proceed.
Sure. So, uh, we, we started this back looking at, uh, a start point of 2006, uh, which is when the first property acquisitions started to happen. Uh, there were formerly a, a series of, uh, single-family homes between Fairville and Ferncliff along Rocky River Drive. Uh, the mosque started acquisition of some of those, uh, some of those properties. Uh, for reference, we're looking at the block that goes all the way from Rocky River Drive to, uh, west 185th and sort of central to that block. And then, uh, there'll be kind of little nibbles at, uh, both north and south of that. So, uh, next slide, please. So going to 2010, several of the properties were, uh, consolidated, purchased, uh, and started in the process of demolition, um, to kind of start creating this, this plot of land that would allow the ultimate creation of the mosque. Uh, the assumption of the school started them to do some, uh, education on site, uh, with the former, uh, St. Patrick's School. Um, next slide. This goes to 12. There were two more property acquisitions and, uh, you can see the completion of the demolition along Rocky River Drive just north of the school. And, uh, with this notion that they were gonna need supporting parking, uh, on Fairville, uh, unit seven, uh, sorry, lot seven, uh, is identified on the map, was purchased as well. And then, uh, going ahead to 14, uh, those properties have been demoed, uh, demoed at seven. And you can see the consolidation of kind of a, of what's starting to be a block-to-block and the start of the construction of the mosque at that point. Uh, next one. So, uh, by the time we get to 10 years ago at this point, 2015, construction of the mosque has continued. Uh, and there's been the start of paving that will then allow the consolidated lot all the way from Ferncliff to Fairville. Uh, and other properties toward the north have been acquired and then started to be demoed. Again, continuation of that. So at this point, they started to acquire then five and six, which really gave them full block-to-block control, uh, for the whole frontage along Rocky River Drive. And then continuing, 17, we got continued demolition, again, further clearing of that for next phases. And again, next, looking to 2018, uh, additional parcels, uh, further down on Fairville were starting to be acquired. And next, uh, some of the peripheral edges as well then started to be acquired. Um, the funeral home, which, uh, we presented as part of the, uh, Plaza presentation, uh, south of Ferncliff, uh, was purchased as well as the adjacent, uh, property to the left of that to the west, uh, and obviously the completion of the mosque as well. And then continuing. So at this point, when we get to 22, 23, uh, the start of the construction of the community gymnasium space, uh, as well as some additional parking, uh, 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 parcel purchases that are envisioned to start creating parking, offsetting for the construction of the community center at that point. You'll see, uh, to the west on Ferncliff, the paved area, uh, at lot, I think it's 20, 28, uh, for additional offset parking. And then continuing. This is, uh, sort of getting to the point where we're at present day, where we're at 24, uh, the completed parking lot, uh, at 27 to 28. And you see the clearing at, uh, uh, it's 14, but two more lots off of Fairville, uh, that are basically ready to be paved as well, uh, to offset for that community center so that we're offsetting our parking further into the block. And then, so current, current, uh, they have started to look at the, um, what's not shown on this one, uh, because of the aero map update is, uh, the property that we presented for the Plaza has been, uh, currently demoed at 35. And then the plan then going forward, which is the next portion of our presentation then, is the consideration for the expansion of the school. The, uh, the, the school at the corner of Ferncliff and Rocky River Drive, uh, is really at capacity. And they're trying to see how do we make this, uh, burgeoning, uh, student body available to have better facilities? And so they're crafting a broader vision that starts to look at a phase one that would basically extend the property all the way to Fairville and Rocky River Drive with a first-phase-one-story classroom building. Uh, and then with a future plan to offset, which is kind of what started the conversation about master planning for this, that would be further to the west, uh, kind of north and west of the gymnasium space, taking up the parking lot, uh, or a portion of the parking lot as a, as a three-story addition to follow at some future point in time. And then the question is, well, where does that parking go and how do we offset this and what happens with some of this property acquisition to the west and the north and the south? So that's what kind of prompted this conversation about the master plan. So if we can go to the next one, this kind of shows the aggregate parcel, uh, consolidation at, uh, at the present time. So they do have a series of, uh, parcels. And as the Imam, uh, has shared in the past, you know, he has been a frequent visitor on almost every porch, uh, to, you know, request that, hey, if you ever look to sell, please look to sell to us, um, as kind of a first write of refusal. So, um, he is crafting this broader vision of, So he is crafting this broader vision of, of creating this community that is, you know, now really becoming, you know, quite a compound in the neighborhood. So.
Madam Chair to the applicant, I want to be clear, I'm not very clear. As, as you highlighted, all the parcels in yellow, are those the ones you? I'm trying to get a picture of all the property you own. It's not very clear.
I'm sorry, could you do that one more time?
Okay, I'm looking at a slide that has yellow shading.
Correct.
Is that in totality, that's every parcel you control and maintain?
That, that is the current, current established one. The only one that is slightly incorrect is at the corner of Ferncliff and Rocky River Drive, there is a two-family home that accidentally included in that that is directly north of the Plaza, but that is part of the, that property. But everything else is currently under, under control of, of the mosque itself.
So, so I'm trying to visualize the other slides and they had red dots on the parcels, which aren't consistent with what I'm looking at here. That's what's confusing me.
No, and, and I, I will apologize. What, what probably should have happened, and this is why I was referencing this as a kind of a work in progress, is that I, I think for consistency, this would have represented them as an aggregate versus disappearing, you know, with each purchase, which the previous slides didn't delineate very well. It should have been, you know, an aggregate condition. So as we documented the purchases over time, then they went away for the next, you know, we were highlighting the yearly purchases, not the consolidation and aggregation of lots, which, which, which again, in a, in a future presentation, I would hope to, I hope to, to show better or. Still not clear. Document yearly purchases and not, not in aggregate, which this slide was trying to address then.
Okay, maybe I'm not being clear because I'm even more confused. I don't care about aggregate. I don't care about what you were considering. What I care about as a commission member is understanding which parcels you control and own. Period.
And, and this, this at, at present documents the property holdings of the mosque, this slide.
Thank you.
May proceed.
Okay, the next slide then. Attempts to kind of outline if they can continue to purchase properties. Probably, as I said, with, with this being a work in progress, the middle section is between Fairville and Ferncliff. Those several homes are, you know, where we're considering this a work in progress to show future development for that. That is the one part that was unresolved by the time we wanted to submit this so that we could present this along with the school. And again, which is the reasoning for the informational purposes. But this attempts to document, if I look to the, to the south below Ferncliff, the central building with the kind of U-shaped pedestrian access off of Rocky River Drive is the Plaza building that we had presented to you. This shows a future acquisition to the north and the south to develop that more as a consistent street presence along Rocky River Drive. So this is that bigger, broader picture that I would have alluded to in our presentation for that. And it includes then the property that is the current funeral home, which is just to the left of that at the kind of exit drive of the parking lot behind. If you go to the north of Fairville and Rocky River Drive, you're just going to see the first phase right at the corner, which is the one-story addition that we're going to propose as a next agenda item. And then you're seeing an L-shaped portion of the site that is intended to represent the three-story phase two of the school at that point. Yeah, this, this helps much better. Parking would be maintained adjacent to this. The, the, the question of how far that parking lot would extend further to the west on the adjacent parcels is sort of where we're trying to resolve, whether that's program space or whether that's, you know, future expanded parking to, to help with the programming of the schools, Phase One and Two. But as we look to the left, to the west, towards 185th, the Imam would assume that we could create enough contiguous parcels to allow creation of townhomes that would allow for some of the elderly population that would want to walk to the mosque. The potential, the parking lot that's shown on Fairville, center of the site, is existing and has been previously permitted, is just waiting to be paved at this point. And then they envisioned kind of the far west side to be kind of public amenities, both for the school, for the community itself, and functionally for the neighborhood, to basically create a soccer field, tennis, pickleball, pool, park, playground area that would kind of anchor kind of the far west side. So it becomes more passive as it sort of gets into and adjacent to the residential with kind of the focusing on all of the program space and the community build out at that point, kind of at Rocky River Drive is that commercial side of it. So it's trying to bifurcate some of the, some of the, the uses as well to kind of, you know, ease this, this more passive condition, you know, as it nestles further into the neighborhood. And sort of, this is sort of the grand plan of things. There are parcels that are residential, not reflected in this, that the, the mosque has intended to, you know, maintain its ownership, but probably for rental to people in the community, you know, attendees and congregants at the mosque at this point. They're not represented in the master plan. They will be in the future as we refine, refine this just so that we can kind of showcase the fact that the intention is to maintain those as residential properties at the moment. And again, this doesn't show in this kind of central slide, the plaza to the bottom with the, with the, but the, the next slide, I believe, shows that as well.
To the applicant, before we, before we proceed, let's have a quick clarifying question. Evelyn, can you go back to the slide that shows the, the shading of the parcels, please? So I'm trying to understand, in this picture, it looks like lots or the parcel 40 and 41 as indicated on a previous slide, I guess to the north of Fairville. I don't see that represented in the slide that we were just on for the proposed vision for the entire campus. Can you just speak to 40 and 41 and how that factors into the, the long-term vision?
Yeah, th- these are the properties that are north of Fairville?
Correct. Yes.
I'm sorry, Evelyn, maybe I can ask if you could go back.
So see 40 and 41, yes.
Yes. So again, there, because that is such a consistent residential condition, because the same would functionally apply to the two parcels, basically at 185th and Ferncliff, that as they've acquired residential properties north and south of, of kind of the central block, they're maintaining those as residentials. So that's, that, that isn't, that's why, and again, this is an apology for, for the presentation and why it was submitted for informational purposes only, is that the, the final slide should actually just include property acquisition that they would own as residential and maintain as residential as kind of keeping that kind of residential line to the north and the south of the central block. So the acquisitions that they have on Fairville now, 40 and 40, 48, whatever, and then the two that are below on Ferncliff, those are being maintained and including the parcel that's directly west of the, of, of the funeral home now is being maintained as residential. There's, there's one property just south of Ferncliff that's behind what's presently the funeral home.
Madam Chair, just to pay you back to the applicant, I, I think if, if you're making a, you know, as you polish this and take it on the road, as it were, you would make, in my opinion, if I were a resident or anyone interested in what you're trying to achieve here, I want to, I really want to know all the parcels you own and what impact they have in the overall plan. Now, if you said, hey, we're maintaining this residential edge, I would, to me, that's important. I mean, you can be very clear about what your intentions are so people don't create that narrative for you. Thank you.
Agreed. So in, in essence, this, this was intended to just start to preview this. We had, we had suggested at one point in time of uncoupling this, you know, almost in, with a nod to Saturday Night Live. This was partially the not-ready-for-prime-time presentation, as a way of kind of trying to demonstrate how the school would fit into a broader context. The, the suggestion was we would still want to present this, even though it was probably, again, presented for informational purposes as a work in progress. So again, with apologies for, you know, leaving some portions of this kind of really not flushed out to the degree that they should have been for, for the character of this presentation, to not leave those holes in the conversation. You know, I probably should offer an apology for it, but it was thought that this should probably not be uncoupled because the school presentation would then lead to the, the following question of, well, where are you putting parking and how are you doing this? And you're going to keep expanding. Where does that impact the rest of the neighborhood? So the intent was, this was hoped to do more good than harm as well as just trying to give this broader picture that this isn't, this isn't, this isn't done without some planning and look ahead at this point. And again, it, it's conceptual. They do not own enough parcels to see this vision, but as demonstrated by the history of the property acquisition over, you know, what's functionally most 20 years of time, that was sort of what the intent was, that this is, this is not a, a one-and-done application. They are, you know, putting down roots in this neighborhood and, and trying to establish this broader vision for the community. So I hope, I hope that helped at least try to frame the reference for it.
Thank you. I also want to give space to the councilman to, if there's anything you would like to share.
Thank you. You know, it's, it's what's, what I find really interesting about this, just kind of to zoom out, is a lot of the growth initially of West Park decades ago was a lot of people kind of building communities around religious institutions. So what I see happening at Al Almeria Day is sort of a, a version of, of how West Park came to be the West Park we know today. Much to my delight, and this is a statistic from planning staff, the immediate neighborhood here has a 99% occupancy rate. This is a very sought-after part of the city and we have people moving in from suburbs seeking to be near this institution to send their children to the school that's affiliated with it. It's, it's a great growth point and it's frankly one that I, I don't think people maybe outside the neighborhood know is happening sort of here on the southwest side. By some accounts, is actually perhaps the largest mosque congregation in the state of Ohio. So it's, it's, this is a big deal. The challenge obviously has been the growth versus the ability to park the number of people coming to services. Last Friday, my assistant and I were sort of doing a lap of the neighborhood, checking in on stuff. And basically, west of Rocky River Drive, on a Friday, Friday afternoon prayer, every street parking spot is full, in this entire map, west of Rocky River Drive. And through traffic engineering, we've also, and we need to sign it better, but we've started allowing street parking on Rocky River Drive where there had been none. And basically, all of Rocky River Drive on one, if not both sides of the street here is full of cars parked for Friday prayers. When you layer on weekly Friday prayers, you know, different holidays and then the duration of Ramadan, where there's the, the services in the evening, it sort of equates out to one out of three days of the year, there's a critical parking need. So this is not a case where when we've gone and talked about getting zoning variances for mid-block parking and things, this is not a case where we're trying to build for Black Friday and the rest of the year, the mall parking lot's empty. There really is a parking demand here. And the purpose of this, and I want to be very clear because if I were a resident and I saw where I currently live and reside now as being presented as a soccer field, I'd start raising some questions. No one is forcing you to sell your property. There is no eminent domain. This is merely an aspiration of the institution. But in seeking this presentation, I think what the city is really trying to understand is as this institution grows and as a result, the parking lot gets smaller and smaller, but parking demand's going to grow and grow. How are we looking at this holistically? I'm very appreciative of, of this, but I will also say that within the public right-of-way and especially in the Rock River Drive right-of-way, really from the Furious Avenue down to Homeway, which is the last remaining residential street, I think there's an opportunity to start rethinking this right-of-way and start paring it down and having it be slower traffic and creating opportunities for street parking and maybe new retail and things so that the success we see here can kind of spill out onto the main corridor and this not just sort of feel like the highway to the airport. I think I'll leave it there. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but I will say, and maybe I've said this before, the Imam would have been a very prolific planner, had he gone that route. He's talking to me, asking questions of, you know, if we have, for example, let's say that there were four houses in a row with common ownership. He said, would we be able to maybe demolish and build? You could fit seven townhomes there and we have a demand of people who want to live in the neighborhood. And I'm saying, yeah, I think all options are on the table. It's, it's, it's a, it's a growth point and I want to figure out how to balance the growth, maintain the ability for the rest of the neighborhood to function and, and also not do it in a way, and I don't think this is happening, where residents feel that this is kind of encroaching upon them, that there have been very open conversations. They've had residents in to talk about some of the projects. And to my delight, there's very positive relations, it seems, between the mosque as the institution, people who attend it and, and many of the long-term residents who maybe were present at the beginning of that series of maps. So this is, this is a great, this is a great Cleveland story. I'm happy to tell it, but obviously it comes with some growing pains.
I would, thanks, Commissioner. I, I appreciate that. That helps understand and frame the conversation. You know, I, I think all of us, and all right, we all, I believe we all live in the city of Cleveland and we have institutions and expansions and, and, you know, being transparent, being forthcoming, being honest about what's going to happen and what it looks like is vitally important. So I think, you know, with some, some intentionality and some thought around how this presentation sort of unfolds and, 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 you know, as you aggregate all these stories, it would be wonderful to kind of hear it, you know, hear it again and see what's going on, you know, in a year, two years. So thank you. And so this is for information only, so there's no need to vote. Okay.
But we do have another item related to the school wing addition, so don't go far. We're going to move on to FW 200514. This is the school wing addition and this is for a conceptual. Again, I would direct the commissioners to the notes here from the design review from nine, from September 17th. But you can proceed with this portion of the presentation, please.
Understood. So just in terms of context, this project was presented on Wednesday morning to the Far West Design Review Committee. And again, for purposes of just transparency, there was some conversation amongst the members about some aesthetic decisions for the choices that we were making on the exterior. And so they requested the project be tabled. I had a discussion with Mr. Lull about whether or not that meant we should delay a conceptual presentation to Planning Commission. He had recommended that we continue making the presentation. I don't think that any of the comments made by the board or by the committee were kind of insurmountable in terms of, of addressing, but there was a little bit of, of disparate voices about, you know, what is contextual to, to the expansion and, and how that should work. So for your consideration, we are presenting this and then we will hope to go back, taking and incorporating their comments and some of their requests, maybe with the hope of submitting in two weeks that we could present to them as they've seen it with enough augmented information to be considered for schematic design review, if, if that is possible. Worst case, we, we would, we would re-present then for conceptual. So again, as, as previewed in the, in the master plan currently, this red outlined block at the moment would outline the current parcel, block-to-block that they, they conserv, presently own at this point. And it shows kind of the current configuration of the school to the south, the mosque in the middle, the new gymnasium and sports spaces to the north. And then this presentation is going to focus on kind of finishing out to the corner to the north. So next slide. So again, this is similar in, in thought to the Plaza, which is at the lower left of the presentation slide, that basically this is the context that we're dealing with, residential to the north, multifamily more or less to the east, and then surrounding residential further to the west at this point. But obviously, and then the next slide will show sort of the context of the, the mosque itself. So you're seeing in the lower left, the same completed gymnasium, the same adopted architectural vocabulary vernacular of this striped condition that they've used repeatedly and obviously. uh, that they've used repeatedly and obviously we're adopting to the south for the plaza itself. And then, uh, next slide. So in essence, this first phase expansion then looks at putting this proposed new addition to kind of finish off the missing piece to the corner. So you see to the south, the school, uh, the mosque, the gymnasium, uh, and then this proposed new addition that kind of finishes that linear line down uh, to the end and then starts to wrap it, you know, kind of the oblique angle, uh, to fairville at this point. Uh, modification of the parking lot to remove the parking, obviously that's, uh, under currently under the proposed new addition. Um, and maintaining those circulation routes through there as well. Uh, but again, if you see just to the left, two lots over from the parking lot, that is the currently vacated, uh, two homes that is permitted to go forward shortly with parking. And then at the lower, uh, uh, left, you see what is currently then a parking lot that helps to offset this future addition already kind of in kind right now, uh, anticipating it moving forward. So, uh, next slide. So this is sort of a preliminary layout of how the building exterior reflects to the classroom conditions. Um, it's adding, uh, some, uh, a core or library space and then a shared library or laboratory space in the center with all the rest of the classrooms kind of facing to the outside. Um, it basically maintains kind of the walkway around the existing gymnasium as a connector. Cause the school will have use of, uh, that gymnasium space and, um, uh, for purpose of the first phase is going to utilize the existing restrooms that were built as part of the gymnasium. The school would have daily use of the gymnasium and then we, it would be locked off, uh, in the evenings for community space, uh, or the community to use the gymnasium as they do now. Uh, next slide then. So again, this is, uh, an attempt to honor more or less the, uh, the larger volume of the gymnasium space. And then basically continue the same height references, uh, and more or less similar window references for, uh, this addition to fill out to the corner. Uh, so it's basically just kind of extending that linear, uh, vocabulary all the way down as a continuation of what's been built to date. Uh, so this is just kind of the Rocky River Drive elevation, sort of the, uh, side, uh, north elevation. Uh, next. Would sort of be the parking lot elevation, uh, so kind of a bleak view of some of the kind of, uh, uh, as the building responds to, uh, to the, the oriented orientation of the gymnasium itself. There's a lot of ins and outs and sawtooths at that point. And then next. So this is sort of in context with then the school to the left on the top, the mosque in the middle and, uh, the new gymnasium. Um, you know, functionally, the, the, the Imam has kind of referred to this and, and maybe the next slide will show it a little better. So in context, you know, the, the, the mosque is kind of the faith center of this. The, uh, the school at the left, which will remain is sort of the educational center of this. And the far right, the, the new gymnasium are, is kind of this community centered, uh, condition. So when we considered wrapping this around, he was very, very, um, uh, adamant about keeping kind of these high volumes, you know, on the street front to represent kind of, these are these kind of three pillars of the community at this point, community, faith and, and education. So, uh, he was, uh, he, he was the one who was kind of setting the, the visual direction that, you know, this, this low uh, slung condition across Rocky River Drive and then returning back is kind of, you know, the precursor to the primary elements of, of what this, uh, community, uh, space represents, you know, as, as a faith community essentially or as a, as a, uh, uh, as, as an overriding principle, more or less. Um, the, the future addition that would go, uh, in this case, just to the west, to the back of the slide would be three stories, uh, because of program need to kind of, you know, build more school. Uh, but basically it would keep that street presence more or less reflecting those. Then in this case, this shows then that same relationship from the back. And then uh, again, just some renderings, this would be that rear entrance, the corner itself. So again, this is conceptual. And would happy to answer any questions at this point.
Yeah. Uh, presentation, Adam?
Yeah, I'm subbing for Nate today. He's out, out of town, but, um, and apologies for being late and missing the master plan presentation. I'm glad that everybody saw that. And I think that, that's been a big request of the design review committee over time. And I think some, uh, committee members here too, to see, to see more of that vision. Um, so, uh, the, the design review committee, uh, uh, both, uh, presentations as well. They had some mixed views on the, the addition itself. Um, really talking about adding, um, an enhanced landscaping plan and, uh, the mainly the discussion was along that frontage along Rocky River, uh, drive and how inviting or not inviting the kind of window and door placements are along the street. Um, I think there's a, there's certainly like a, a circulation plan element on the interior of the facility related to that as well as what's going on with the, um, the school, uh, to the south and the, the main entrances of the parking lot. So, um, the committee had mixed reviews on it. I think staff are a little bit more willing to gamble with this concept approval, noting that the landscaping and other things will come time with later reviews.
Director, do you have something? Mission members?
Oh, you just have to add a little levity. Um, I had flashbacks to, to grade school when I saw that plan.
I'm really struggling hearing the audio. It keeps cutting in and out.
Oh, my mic is on. You want me to speak louder? Can you hear me now? It might be your insight. Hey, can you hear me? I think it's on him. Anyway. Broke my train of thought. Anyway. Back in grade school, I'm like an old grandpa. Um, story time. Uh, back in grade school, um, I attended Brookline Elementary School, um, on West Hundred Seventeenth. And they built this, I thought I was going to go on to another, um, school and go to like junior high, but they, over the summer, did this addition. And this addition had a library in the middle and all the, the classrooms, sort of an octagon all around it. Um, and when I saw that initially, I said, oh no, that's not a good thing, but they enclosed it. That library was open. Your doors from the classrooms that opened into the library. And, uh, it was really interesting, uh, disruption. Every class changed when you had kids studying in the library. But anyway, good job on substantially low paying the library because I think it should be the central focus, obviously knowledge. Um, so when I see that you've enclosed it, so that'd be a, that'd be a, a better situation. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm reading the comments of, of this, of the staff and, and the review committee. Schools are tough. Obviously we, but we want the massing, we want the windows, we want everything that we would typically do on a commercial building to, to exhibit that. But at the end of the day, there's, there's learning going on in those classrooms. And, um, and this is a different dynamic. I'm, I'm sure you'll come up with something. I, I like the fact that, um, you're trying to maintain some sort of a architecture that, that's, that's consistent with what you started. Doesn't feel out of scale. I mean, cause Rocky Rivers are really right now, kind of a, a funny thoroughfare, for lack of a better term. And, uh, if you, you guys know what's along and around that, that area, um, this is a would be a great addition, so.
Um, and I, I would also lift up, and this is, I think, less about the design recommendations, but also respecting the cultural elements of what this, you know, campus represents. And so I think that's just something else for consideration. Um, I agree that, you know, a school obviously is much different than a, a standard commercial space, but I think what I don't see in the comments is respecting and recognizing uh, the cultural makeup of this campus. Um, and I really appreciate the elevation of like faith, community, education, um, that really resonates with me, uh, you know, just from a value standpoint. Um, but I would just encourage, uh, you know, going back to the design review and, and maybe communicating this to Nate, just emphasizing to, to community members, uh, to maybe ask some questions and to learn a little bit more about the culture. Um, to understand why this particular design and of course, in accordance with design principles, I'm not proposing that we violate those, um, but also respect the cultural significance. Uh, can we entertain a motion or unless there's any other comments?
I, I, I like to, to move to approve the presentation for con- concept or conceptual design as presented, uh, with the understanding that the applicant will continue to work with staff to come up with, um, what's amenable for both parties, but so keeping in mind that, um, this, this development, um, it needs to sort of maintain a cultural identity. Um, Director Hursman actually pointed out something that might be an opportunity. Um, the library that's on the corner there. Um, since it's not a classroom, there could be some opportunities to do something, this, do something slightly different there with windows or fenestration or any type of articulation, because it is a special space. It would be a nice space because it's on the corner. So you have a nice panoramic view of the neighborhood.
My second.
Motion in a second. Everyone, please call the roll.
Anthony.
Yes.
Glueker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
That's life.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you for your patience and, uh, and, and the comments are very much appreciated.
You're very welcome. Have a good rest of your day, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, uh, we are going to move on to the Euclid Order Buckeye Design Review. Uh, first up, we have a demolition at one, one, two, zero, one Union Avenue. Uh, do we have Mr. June right here from the city? I don't need to swear you in. Thank you.
All right. Good, good morning. How are you doing? Uh, so this is the demolition at one, one, two, oh, one Union Avenue. Um, these are the, the owner, is that BA Ohio Flips, uh, about four thousand dollars in taxes. But a number of complaints this year and it's been vacant since twenty twenty. And if you could just go through the pictures. Um, that's just the area, a lot of churches in the area and a lot of houses. And that's just the exterior. More exterior pictures, interior.
I think we're good.
All right.
I'm looking for approval of demolition of one, one, two, oh, one Union Avenue.
Second.
Or motion in a second. Evelyn, please call the roll. Yes.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, next up, we have one, seven, six, four, East Forty Seventh Street demolition Morgan Conservatory. Uh, do we have Kalen and the land bank here? Good morning. If you could just state your name for the record, please. You can move the other mic down if you guys don't want to share. Thank you. Awesome. Uh, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth for this matter and this hearing under perjury of law?
I do.
Thank you. And your names for the record, please.
I'm Nicole Donnelly, Executive Director at the Morgan Conservatory.
And I'm Jim Mayer. I work for the Cuyahoga Land Bank.
Thank you. Like your presentation is up.
Thank you. So this is.
So on behalf of Morgan Conservancy, uh, the Cuyahoga Land Bank is proposing to demolish a house behind, behind a house on East Forty Seventh. Uh, the location is directly adjacent to the former industrial site that is now the, uh, Morgan Conservancy papermaking facility. And uh, when I first looked at this property and I saw the houses that were proposed for demolition that are owned by Morgan Conservancy, I was kind of thrilled that there would be this opportunity for a green space adjacent to their, their work campus. Uh, and the houses have been owned for several years and, and Nicole will speak to that, but, uh, when they did not look like rehab candidates initially and uh, we, we talked about the, uh, potential benefits of the green space for the, uh, Morgan Conservancy. Uh, it's a, a mixed use neighborhood and, you know, with, uh, light industrial and some residential. And the front house, because of, uh, an asbestos finding has been gutted since the, uh, initial assessment photos were shown. Uh, the front house was built in eighteen eighty-one, I believe. And then the rear house was built in nineteen ten or nineteen twenty, something like that. So this is showing the two structures to be, uh, demolished proposal for demolish, uh, in a Sanborn map, I, I saw a, a garage that was fronting the alley on the, uh, East Forty Sixth Place side. Which, uh, we'll probably uncover with, you know, when during the we'll uncover the foundations if we can proceed with the demolition. Uh, I think you can go to the next slide.
Um, okay. And so what we are looking at is the total, uh, parcel holdings of the Morgan Conservatory right now. So we do, we have occupied our primary facility building seventeen fifty-four, East Forty Seventh. Um, for over seventeen years. And we've been in the neighborhood since that time. Over time, we acquired the parcels on East Forty Fifth Street. Um, and those were developed into a fiber garden. The Morgan Art of Papermaking is a nonprofit art center. We're dedicated to hand papermaking, letterpress printing and book arts. And we take sustainability very seriously. So papermaking really does begin with plants. And we grow plants in that garden that we process into paper pulp. We make papers from those. We print on them. They're bound into books. We try to share that with our community. Um, over time, uh, the houses immediately adjacent on East Forty Seventh, uh, became vacant. They were boarded by, they were winterized and boarded up by the city of Cleveland in twenty sixteen. Morgan Conservatory purchased those in twenty nineteen. Uh, at the time, we purchased them with the hope that we could, uh, rehab them into artist housing. We invite artists who are traveling from around the country to come here and share what they know. Um, and we also have an artist residency program, but after assessment, those houses were deemed to be far too costly to rehab. Um, and they were in very poor condition. So, uh, plans were made at that time to move ahead with demolition, but twenty twenty happened, so that was put on pause. Um, I arrived in June of twenty twenty-three, so, uh, at that time, I recognized that we needed to begin moving ahead with that, uh, plan for demolition. I reached out to the Cuyahoga Land Bank in March of twenty-four and, uh, proceeded to work with them to see if we could be moved on to their slate of projects. Uh, in March of twenty-five, we received a green light. Uh, so our project was taken on and I guess we could move to the next slide. Um, so this is to take a look at our plans for those properties. Um, because we are very focused on sustainability and environmentalism and, uh, to build new housing would be extremely costly, multiple year capital campaign. Um, we decided to make a green space. So this is going to be a native plant and rain garden. Um, that connects our frontage on East Forty Seventh to the gardens on East Forty Fifth. Um, and we are going to, that's the final side in there, I guess. Um, but, yeah. So, uh, we are, um, that area where it says separate roof, it was an addition to our original building built in nineteen forty and it is an entirely separate roof so that we can divert all of that stormwater into the neighboring lot, um, and provide water for three rain gardens. So we'll be managing some of that stormwater, rain off, runoff, um, and creating a garden that is community accessible during our open hours. If you want to go to that next slide, there's some pretty plants or the idea of them.
So much. Commission members, comments, questions?
Why I'm being so nostalgic today? I, when I was in mine university, there was a, a, a degree, paper and pulp science. So when you start talking about pulp and paper, really? So it was kind of awesome to hear that you guys have a garden there and, and, and I want to visit. I want to know how.
So it was kind of awesome to hear that you guys have a garden there and and I want to visit. I want to know how that works. So.
I have a fun anecdote about toilet paper.
Actually bring little brochures for the commissioners today, so if you'd like one.
Yes, thank you. Any other comment? Um and I just want to lift up uh the recommendations for this in review. Um around providing staff with documentation of some of the history of the structures. Um and and as they indicate, determine if anything can be salvaged. But I think you all did a really phenomenal job of how you're already and how you will continue um to be really con-conscious of uh the the land and the properties that you have.
I just want to add. One of our committee members, one of our committee members' daughters actually worked or volunteered here some years ago. And so he was, you know, this particular committee member is very cognizant of the whole demolition. He always uh speaks up on behalf of preservation. Um but he said that he realized that this uh structure was in such poor condition. And he was the one that suggested, you know, anything that's salvageable, that that should be um reclaimed. And perhaps placed somewhere within the facility. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, ma'am, a motion, please.
Sure. Madam Chair, make motion to have the demolition of East Forty Seventh Street with the conditions set by the Euclid Corridor Buckeye Design Review Committee.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
And Slife.
Yes.
So motion carries. Do you all do anything with Oriana House?
Uh we haven't, to my knowledge.
I would like previously worked there. I would love to figure out a way uh for you all because I feel like there's there's a great opportunity from a learning standpoint for the clients there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them.
Okay.
Nudge them.
Can I take this?
Thank you. Yes, you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, continuing uh with the Euclid Corridor Buckeye Design Review. Uh EC two thousand twenty five dash three two, the African Town Retail Center. Uh Project Representative Joe Myers and James Sesson, are they here on present or online? We have any representatives for the African Town Retail Center? Joe Myers or James Sesson? We have um.
Well, we can skip and move on and return back to it if necessary.
Okay. No problem.
Go ahead. You announced it now.
Okay, uh so we are gonna uh just for everyone's uh understanding, we're gonna skip over the African Town Retail in hopes that we're able to find the uh applicants for that. Next, we're gonna start with our public art presentations. Uh Vice Chair Fluker is going to recuse himself um from the next item, which is one one six two three Buckeye Road. You're welcome. And do we have, actually, sorry, one sec.
Uh please, you can answer.
Uh I am also going to recuse myself from one one six two three Buckeye Road um and turn it over to uh Commissioner McCray Scott.
I believe the applicant is online.
I am. Okay.
All right, you can go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, we are about to hear public art presentation at one one six two three Buckeye Road.
Oh, right. Um, good morning, everyone. So I am here to uh show the design for this Huntington Bank mural. So this is a bird's eye view at one one six two three Buckeye Road.
Excuse me, could you announce your name, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's been a while since I've been here. Uh my name is Alon Gonzalez. I'm a project manager for Land Studio. I'm joined um by my Director of Parks and Community, David Wilson, um as well. David, is she sharing a screen, right?
I am not. The the commission is sharing the screen.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Am I okay to go? Go on.
Yes, please continue.
Okay, so this is um the street view facing east, so the mural is on the opposite side of 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 this view here. Oh, I guess we already skipped past it. Um so this is the selected artist, Krista.
Sorry, what slide would you like me to be on?
Um, three slides back.
Three slides, one, two, three.
This side. So this is the street view facing west, and this is where the mural will be. Okay, now you go for it. Okay, so this is the selected artist, Krista Child. So Krista has been an active freelance artist um here in Cleveland. Um she's worked on several large public art projects, including the RTA mural wall last year. She's also a transformative arts fund participant. So a little bit about her here. Um uh you can go to the next slide. Um so here are some of the dimensions. Uh and as you can see with the Huntington sign. Uh with the Huntington sign um being kind of large and prominent there, the artist intends to start the design with a about um four to five inches clearance between the end of the sign and where you can see kind of that yellow dotted line, about sixteen feet from the ground there. You can go to the next slide. Um so this is the uh mural design. Um we did a couple of rounds of community engagement with this design. We took it to Neighbor Up at Rice Library. We took it to Ward Six Meeting. We got um, you know, a letter of support from uh Pres- uh City Council President Lane Griffin, which uh we included at some point. And uh essentially, the concept is kind of an ode to like uh kind of the street economy and youth, youth vendors. You know, folks selling water on the street and things like that. And the blue line, because this came up in Design Review yesterday, like the blue sort of water like waves in between the folks is just showing kind of how money flows through a community. Um so, you know, she didn't want it to be too bank forward, but um you know, I just kind of owe to local economy. You can go to the next slide. Um so here, we're just letting you know what kind of material she intends to use. Um we're gonna get an anti-graffiti coating after it's finished, which is sort of standard practice now, which I will obviously um prolong the longevity of the mural. Showing some of that community and outreach and engagement that we talked about. She does intend to submit a maintenance plan afterwards with all the colors used um for maintenance. And Huntington Bank will will be required to to keep up with the maintenance on this on this project. We are hoping to finish it before the end of October two thousand twenty five. Um you can go to the next slide. And and that is what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Um I'm uh very much in support of this mural. I love the vibrancy, the color. I love the fluidity of the composition and how it integrates with the building. Um I think it's definitely gonna add to the vibrancy of the neighborhood. It's been um several years since a mural has gone into that particular neighborhood. The last one, I believe, that went in that immediate vicinity is across the street. And I think that one's been there at least five years. Um I did want to share uh an excerpt from uh Council President Griffin, um his letter of support. It said, "This mural initiative represents a meaningful investment in the cultural and aesthetic landscape of the Buckeye neighborhood. Furthermore, it continues to advance our objectives outlined in the Elevate the East Action Plan, which has been our guide and compass for these efforts. Public art plays a vital role in community revitalization, and this project is a shining example of how collaboration between artists, institutions, and residents can transform public spaces." And I uh completely agree with him. And I do just want to make um one other comment um just based on the experience we had with the Euclid Corridor Buckeye Design Review. I think that we have to be very mindful with um some of the comments about content or uh quality of murals and being sensitive and respectful to our artists. Um there were some comments made during deliberation that I just think were a little uncalled for. And I just, you know, again, want people to be mindful of the purview of these different um advisory committees. It's appropriateness of location, size, scale, and the building, not um if you want to make a negative comment about the quality of the artist's work. So I just want to reiterate being mindful of that. Thank you.
Well said. Commission member?
I I think it's a great addition. Um I'm eager, I'm happy that we're like over the past number of years, there's been an effort to bring a little more vitality to the Buckeye Corridor. Uh so this is certainly an aspect of that. So I I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Do we need a second? Can I second? Because the chair. I second.
Um Anthony has recused, Fluker has recused, McCray Scott.
Yes.
And Slife.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Going back, right? Okay, we did um.
Thank you. Shouldn't have sent you with the art.
Oh. Whoops. Okay, um we have the option to either go back to the African Plaza or continue with public art if Joe Myers is. Okay, we're gonna continue with public art then and then go back to African Plaza at the end.
Evelyn?
Yes.
It's Joe Myers. I I apologize. I, we met with the Euclid Corridor yesterday and they asked us to make some changes to the plans. And actually, I thought we put together an email saying, could we get tabled until the next meeting so we have a chance to make those revisions? Can I just request to be tabled till the next meeting and?
Yes, that's perfectly fine. Thank you for letting us know.
Okay, I apologize for the confusion that I I thought we were letting you know ahead of time, but that that was my bad.
I will move. I will move the table of the African Town Retail twenty twenty five zero three two.
And I second.
Commissioner Slife, could I assist on this one a bit?
Yes, please.
Um, could we postpone in that table?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I always mess that up because of my lack of intelligence. That's not the case.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Uh Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
And Slife.
Yes.
Okay, project postponed.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, we're back in for Asia Town.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Um so I'm Neeraj Naik. I'm the Director of Neighborhood Planning at Midtown. Today, I'm gonna be presenting um a ground mural that we're proposing in the Asia Town Papa Park. This is a temporary park that is on uh the vacant Dave's Grocery Store parking lot, uh thirty two thirty six Payne Avenue. Um here you can just see some of the other mural projects that we have um done over the past few years. Um all, you know, focused on Payne Avenue. Um I think we are committed to bringing public art to this corridor and um are continuing to add projects year over year. Um and so we're excited to add this one now. Um the artist we're gonna be working with is Glenn Infante. He's obviously really well known um in Cleveland and has done a ton of work all over the city. He actually hasn't done any work in Asia Town, um so we're really excited to have him as an AAPI artist in Cleveland. Um finally have a piece in the neighborhood. This is just some examples of some of his other work. He, the kind of mural we're gonna be doing is a basketball court um for local youth. Uh and so he's done several of these um around the city already. Uh and then the mural in the center is one that's in um the Midtown neighborhood on Carnegie Avenue. So these, this is the site of where we're going to be placing the mural. Um so this is the northeast corner of the site. Uh and I'll show you guys a site map later just so that you can understand what else is at this site. Um but this is just the site condition. Uh this is information that um Glenn has passed along regarding the materials and the site preparation. I'll note that um we are intending for this to be a temporary ground mural. Um our long-term plans for this site are to acquire it uh and do a Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Green Infrastructure Grant that would allow us to tear out the asphalt. Um and so we really imagine that uh this will be in place for two to four years uh with the potential for it to be made permanent, um but also leaving open flexibility to reimagine it as green space. And so we're not super worried about um like permanence and making it super um durable. Uh this is the site um size, so it's thirty one by thirty. Really, we're just adding uh one extra foot uh to account for that tree. Um but thirty by thirty is a standard high school size. Um I wanted to read a note from Glenn um on the size. So the proposed thirty by thirty size is a standard half-court option commonly used at the high school level and in community projects. It provides ample space for recreational play, practice, and small-sided games while fitting within the site constraints. Um so based on our funding constraints and um Glenn's guidance, I think we're comfortable with that size. Uh we can move on to the next slide. This is the design that we uh came up with. Um we, our team has done community engagement with um some of the youth that are using the park already. And in those passages, you could see a basketball court or a basketball hoop, excuse me. Um and so we're really excited to bring um a really high-quality piece of artwork in a space for them to really utilize. And I also just want to note that um while we are looking to like improve the space for these people currently using the park, we're not looking to build out a space that is gonna attract a league or um extra use just to be respectful to the residents. So that's part of the reason for the size as well. Um so that's the rendering of of what it'll look like. I think we can move on to the next slide. And then this is just the map of everything that's going on on the site. So this is one of the city's transformative arts fund project sites. Uh so Jordan Wong, who had presented to this committee before, is installing five elements, uh lightbox, playful seating, ping pong tables, a gate, and um decorative planters. So those are all pictured here, and then you can see the space for where the court will be um proposed there as well. Um we're relocating some of the existing amenities like the pergola in the library's uh art box to the eastern uh part of the site. And we're doing all of this work over the month of September, so all of this work will be concluded by September twenty seventh, provided we receive approval from the committee. Uh in time for our mid-autumn festival, uh which is our annual festival in the neighborhood.
So much. Tara, any additional comments?
Yes, thank you. Um I'm supportive uh generally of this mural as long as there's a semi um permanent um basketball hoop located in proximity or in the proper location with the mural. Um my biggest concern was the, if we could go up to um to one slide to the site plan, yeah, the site plan. Um my biggest concern that I had expressed at Euclid Corridor Design Review where it was um unanimously approved was the proximity to the ping pong tables and any programming with basketball, making sure that people aren't interfering with ping pong while they're. while they're playing basketball. But I also wanted to note that I also did research on regulation-sized courts. And NBA half-court is 47 by 50. A high school court regulation is actually 42 by 50. And the court, the scene here, the 30 by 30, is a standard backyard court size. So if it's just for recreational play, the size isn't as much as an issue because I did agree with the Design Review Committee that they should explore the court size based on however they're programming it. If it's non-regulated games, which I would imagine this space to be in just simple recreational play, that the 30 by 30 would be fine, but that is not the standard high school court. That's a backyard court size. But I am in support. And also, I did notify the councilwoman. I didn't get any objections from the councilwoman. And then lastly, this is, although it's on the same site and space as the transformative arts fund project led by Jordan Wong, it is a separate project led by Midtown and funded by the Gunn Corporation. So it's just two projects layered into the same space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Tara. I agree with you about the proximity. But I think what this site affords us all is flexibility. I mean, that's why it's pop-up, I think, right? So you have to, someone has to be there to kind of supervise those types of activities and observe, I should say. And then things have to be adjusted accordingly, then I think that gives us the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I agree. I support it. I do want to be clear on that. Those were just some observations I made.
By the way, the mural is awesome. I don't know all the players. I know the first two, then after that, I, I don't know who the other players are. Who are they?
Yeah, so the four male players are the AAPI players who have made it to the NBA. I'm not a huge NBA fan either, so I recognize Jeremy Lin and Yao Ming. The other two, I think, I don't want to, I don't want to miss, I don't want to incorrectly say their names. And then the player in the center is the most prominent WNBA player from China, so.
And I will note that the comments from the Design Review just did ask for some type of, you know, placard or something that would indicate and give some context.
Yeah, I was going to mention that as well. That's something I asked for at Design Review, forgot to mention here. But with the descriptive plaque, I think it would be good to also explain that it looks like Korean language symbols.
Chinese, yes.
Chinese, okay. Just explaining what those are as well and the descriptive flag.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll just add for the committee, the words are, they just say Cleveland in Chinese, so.
There's no other comments or questions? Making a motion?
Charlie, being our resident lewis, lewis.
I will admit that I don't know.
Can I make one comment before you go to motion? I also forgot, we got a letter of permission from Aaron Saltzman, the owner of the lot. And he did say the permission is limited to the installation. Use of the court doesn't convey additional rights or long-term commitments, which is in line with what Neeraj said about the short-term installation. And Midtown Cleveland has stated as being responsible for maintenance, safety, removal of the court at the conclusion of its use. So I just wanted to throw that in there also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the Asia Town pop-up park ground mural with the caveat that applicant verify the final location, conduct all required maintenance, and prepare properly for its removal, and provide a descriptive panel identifying the content of the artwork.
I second.
Motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
And Slade?
Yes.
Paris? Thank you so much.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next up, we have EC 2025-29 Ubuntu Gathering Space Obelisk, located at 10299 Shaker Boulevard. Do we have the project representative Maya Madison online?
Hello, yes, I'm here.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Tara, did you want Maya to go first, or would you like to present first?
I'm just going to make one introductory comment and then turn it over to Maya, and I'll say the rest at the end. This case number that was assigned, it actually ended up getting removed from Euclid Corridor Design Review. It was initially assigned because the larger space had come before you some years ago, and this was just an add-on to the space that was already approved. And so with it not being in a Design Review district, it didn't have to go back to local. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Maya, and then I'll say my other comments. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Maya Madison of Robert P. Madison International. I'm an architect and project manager at the firm. I'm also here with my colleague Bailey Cleveland, who's also an architectural designer. So our project is the Ubuntu Park Obelisk Art Installation. And here you can just see where we're located. This is our five-mile radius, right next to the East End Neighborhood House within the Buckeye Wood Hill neighborhood on 103rd and Shaker Boulevard. And just to give some, oh, sorry, really, go back one more time. Thanks. Just to give some context, we're right near Morning Star Baptist Church and the Cleveland Arts and Social Sciences Academy. Okay, next. This slide is just giving some zoning overlays, and then it's zoomed in right into our site, which is the Ubuntu Gathering Place Park, which is just east of the East End Neighborhood House. As you can see, we're right on the north side of Shaker Boulevard with the traffic going west and right on 100, East 103rd Street. So this is sort of showing what is currently designed on the site. As you can see, it's a park with a lot of concentric pathways and a sort of a circular plot, I guess hardscape plaza right in the center, sort of towards the corner. This square, I guess, square box that's represented is our obelisk design, which is essentially just a traditional obelisk that is sort of an ode to the Egyptian obelisks and art. And here, we're just showing the traffic pathways and I guess where it's situated on the current site, where we're imagining this art to be on the current site. These are just some images of what is currently there. So on the, the images on the bottom are just showing that central circular, I guess, I guess you call it like hardscape court with the art imprinted of the African continent. The images above are sort of showing some of the vegetation that's currently designed on the site. And in the central image, we're showing sort of a representation of the size and height of this obelisk, just sort of ghosted in. And this is obviously still very early in our design, but we're just sort of seeking some sort of, I guess, approval of where we're going. And then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Bailey, so she can give some more information on the obelisk itself and the design and how we got to our, our design and what our inspiration was. Go ahead, Bailey.
So in terms of the design of the obelisk, we wanted to kind of nod towards the traditional obelisk and keep the form more similar to those found in Egypt. So it's comprised of concrete panels that we imagined to be held up by some sort of structural metal framing. And so the obelisk sits in this landscaping bed and is about 15 feet from the East 103rd Street right of way and nine feet from the Shaker Boulevard right away. So the base of the obelisk is about four feet by four feet and 20 inches tall. The panels are about three feet tall. And each concrete panel is designed to be sort of cast in relief, incorporating African patterns and Indigo symbols that kind of transform the surface into a cultural narrative. The height of the obelisk is 29 feet, as we want it to be visible in the surrounding community. So these are some inspiration images that we've been looking at. We want to stick with the African motif and incorporate African patterns and Indigo symbols significant to Black culture as this obelisk is meant to empower the community by representing their history and culture. So yeah, these are just some inspiration images, kind of showing how we want to, we want the concrete panels to show up. And then this is just a preliminary sketch of how it would sit on the site. We want it to be visible from afar and, like I said, kind of act as a beacon of the community and symbolize the purpose and mission of the Ubuntu Gathering Space Art.
That's pretty much it. So if, I don't know if anyone has questions. We're still obviously in the very early stages, so.
Thank you. Just curious, based upon the comments from Design Review, if there's anything you would like to add relating to the location of the bench?
That's actually from me. That wasn't from Design Review. So when we saw it initially in 2023 for the full site plan, there were some, if we could go up a couple of slides, a few more. There were, one more. There were initially some flanking benches on either side of the obelisk and some shrubbery. And for me, I felt like that helped frame it really well, so it didn't feel isolated and random on the site as what we saw on the very last slide. But it looks like the last slide is not representational of what the site is right now. So the shrubs are there, but I was curious as to the decision to remove the benches from either side of the obelisk. Again, I thought that was a nice touch for seating and enjoyment, as well as just flanking it in the space. But this, they are here for a schematic review. So they will come back for approval of the final artwork. I don't know if they're going to, if they've decided to get rid of the benches altogether, that's going to be added. But I did want to know how tall the obelisk was and also state that we did get an email of support from Council President Griffin. This is in his ward. But I am generally in support. I just thought it worked better with the benches.
Thank you.
You know, I'm not fully sure about the history of the benches. I'm not sure if they're thinking that would come at a later phase or if it would come back at a later phase. But yeah, currently, it's just the obelisk. But I agree, I think benches probably would be nice right there.
Yes, Vice Chair?
The nostalgia continues. Maya Madison used to babysit my son Cole. Hi, Maya.
Hi. Yeah, he was like.
Okay. I embarrassed you, I'm sorry. But I, I, I do have thoughts about benches near corners and intersections. I don't think they work. The function you get to the street, people feel uncomfortable, to be totally honest. And I, and I, and so I, you know, that's why I love pops, right? You can sort of test some assumptions and then sort of move things around to see if they're successful. As it relates to the, to location of the obelisk, I don't necessarily have a problem with where it's located. I don't think, in terms of purpose, to create like this processional architecture or layout, if you see, but I think, I don't, again, I don't have a problem with the location. And I don't see this as a comment, it's a comment. It doesn't sound like a recommendation or a mandate. So I just wanted to be clear where, where, how far that, that comment was.
Yeah.
Simply just a comment.
Yeah, I was going to say, I kind of agree in that, especially the traffic on Shaker is pretty fast. At least, I know I drive pretty fast on Shaker when I'm there. So I imagine it's maybe not the best. It wouldn't be the most comfortable to sit right there, but yeah.
Okay, just a quick question for Tara and the director. I know this is schematic, I guess just comfortability as far as staff working with the applicant, or do you want them to come back here?
Also want, can you hear me?
Yes.
The obelisk is also located, so it's actually on the center line of that, Maya didn't mention that. The opposite, and I'll go back one other way, I think. So this shows the full site. One more, right there. It's on the center line of that wall, which goes right down the middle of the site. It's on that, it's supposed to be on that diagonal. So that's on the center line. And I think at one time, it was in the center of that circle, but, but now we have artwork there. We didn't want to disturb that. I think at one time, it was actually in the center. So it's, it's, this is the new location. And so we didn't understand, you know, if that artwork wasn't there, that would be the perfect place for it, but that's not where we have it now. Anyway, just keep it low.
Thank you.
Are you all going to have a descriptive panel nearby once you establish and finalize the artwork? And I don't think I got a answer on the height of the obelisk.
The height?
29 feet?
29, yeah.
Thank you, I missed that, sorry.
No worries.
Madam Chair, I too want to. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I, so in regards to the plaque, we're not sure that we would actually have like a separate structure, but maybe actually within.
On the.
Yeah, actually on, like a script on the obelisk itself, just some history and.
That's what I was thinking. I think that would work well on the obelisk, more so than separate.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I agree. It reminds me of the obelisk that's on the corner of 79th and Huff. I don't know if you all know, but that is a time capsule. And it's hollow in the inside. And everything that was going on in 1989, there are news clippings and everything in the base of that obelisk. So.
1989, that was my first project.
Yeah.
So nostalgia continues, okay.
I'm going to close this out on this presentation. It's like, put you on the stage, Mr. Fluker. May I make a motion for this, please?
Oh, I'll make the motion. And by the way, the proportions on the obelisk is historically correct. I need to approve for schematic design of the Ubuntu Gathering Obelisk space as presented today and with no stipulations.
And I second.
Sorry, real quick, are we going to make the recommendation to the applicant to work with staff for final?
I want to make a comment about, if it was a mural or something, I would be comfortable with that. But since they need to show structural engineering of how it's on the site, I think it should come back to you guys.
So.
Thank you.
All right, make sense. My motion stands as delivered.
Roll call, please.
Sorry, they don't get a second, I don't think.
I second.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
And Slade?
Yes.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Of course. Next up, we have transformative art project, the Garden Spine Flora Sculpture, located at 3357 West 50th. Project representative, do we have Mr. Rivas from Metro West CDC? Or the artist?
Hello, I'm Ariel, the artist. And I believe, I believe he's online, and he'll be doing some of the intro things in the middle section. I'm Ariel, part of the transformative arts fund. This project is the Spina Flora, which is going to be one of the first monumental sculptures in the. One of the first monumental sculptures in the Store Avenue area. And uh, Stockyard Lawn or Stockyard uh, on Large in the New West Community. And then I have a control or, or we just say next? Uh, the part, one of the goals for the, for the project was. Getting long-term transformative change and we believe that sculptures are one of those things that instinctively just resound forever. Even though on the practical side, they're not, uh, but on, it, it does, it does, it is a symbol of, of longevity. And one of the things that we wanted to do in transforming the. The ethos of the space and let people feel like, you know, the city is. City and, and the, and the artists and community looking out for the spaces to activate some of the vacant lots. So that there's activity and with some of the projects that uh, the councilwoman in the area. Jasmine Santana and the Business Development Centers. Of creating green gardens, green spaces and really like putting some attention in the neighborhood. Uh, one that activates some of the lots uh, through some of their vacant lot programs. And we have um, got the approval of three, three, three lots. And this is one of the first ones. Next. So this one specifically is looking on at store between uh, Fiftieth Place and Fiftieth Street. And it's a technically a double lot. And we want to um, put the a thirty foot by ten foot by ten foot. Uh, sculpture of a spine flower and the spine flower is a connection of humanity and, and botany. Where the spine represents uh, the human story and then the, the flower represents. Uh, emotional psychological state of our being. And this specific flower was one that uh, we designed. Like finding what we call like the pedology, uh, which is like the math of petals, right? The number of petals. Uh, um, deconstructed from the word Cleveland. Uh, and what was interesting is, you know, cleave has three different meanings, you know, one is to sever. One is, uh, one is to join. And then one is to um, continue on, you know, so it's like. Leaving to purpose. So it was really interesting where the, the three, three, three. That came in, so the pedology is a three, three, three where the, the three large petals, medium petals, smaller petals. And then the, the, forgot the, the, the botnet term, but the part where the bees come and, and pollinate. Uh, next. So this is currently the lot. There's a tree on the, on the northeast side. And it's big as a vacant lot should be, I suppose. Uh, this, this particular. Um, lot doesn't get a lot of like random parking things, but there's some like debris and other things that. Uh, community. Bosses on there, uh, since acquisition and preparation for the Argonne Festival that we had. Couple of weeks ago, uh, we've cleaned up the lot and the next steps is looking at the. The preparation for any concrete bases needed for the sculptures that are going in. Next. Working to the lot, the building um, visible currently has. Um, the sunflower that was uh. What's, what's it coming? Uh, yeah, we, we did it. Uh, approved, thank you. It's Friday. There it is, thank you, Luis. Also approved, the committee were able to do it for the, the festival. Um, and yeah, it's completed and, and it looks lovely.
He's being almost right. Just about the fabricators.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. It's like, I don't know this slide.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Luis. Um. I'm the Arts and Culture Coordinator for Metro West. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the work that the fabricators at it is working with. And the work that they've done in communities. I'm originally from Salvi Village, so this was really. Uh, kind of reciprocal moment to see that the fabricators that we're working with on this project actually instilled some public art in my neighborhood. So this is just an example of the fabrication that these. An example of the fabrication that these um, contractors will be doing. So I just wanted to put this in there as kind of like. Uh, again, an example that they are capable, they are more than capable, and they've worked with CDCs and public art projects to implement these things.
This slide represents the first time that the engineers came to us and were like. Okay, we could build that, you know, because we had these origami constructions and other things that uh, they're like, I don't know. You know, but when we did this one, they're like, okay, this is possible. We get it. Laser cut. Folded and really treated like metal origami at the end of the day. Uh, the only, a slightly uh, deviation from here was when we originally did this one. Those center lines were gonna be bent. That took almost form like an omega and become the, the vertebrae. Uh, when we did the prototype. Uh, we realized like these at the side that they were gonna be, they're gonna have to be hand bent. Uh, and uh, and then create something that I, current moment with, within our budgetary strengths. May not have the long-term rigidity that, you know, I felt comfortable with as something that. That would be in the public sphere and potentially become a green space where, you know, kids are gonna be climbing it. You know, weather's gonna happen, huge spaces and cavity for like ice and other things. So the maintenance plan on it didn't seem feasible within our, as our first project, you know, so it's like. So we, we stepped that down a little bit and instead they're gonna be um, half circle discs. That go along the spine welded onto it without other parts holding it free floating in the air. That'd be the only deviation, so without that centered part, you know, this is still. The, the blueprint, if you will. Next. Here's where we can see just a relationship with an individual and the overall placement. And here is the, the rough dimensions, eleven and a half feet by twenty nine feet. And then the width is about that ten feet for the pedals. And we're imagining that it have a, a concrete base with structural footers. That are anchored towards the ground. We're talking with engineering so that they can provide the proper documents and. And parameters uh, for the weight. The sculpture itself will be done out of um, uh. Uh, three sixteens and um. And almost three quarters aluminum. Aluminum pieces or really, really thick aluminum. And even the hand, the hand bent pit parts of the metal would be hand bent uh, at the, the studio with. With everything welded on site. Like the parts pre-welded and then those parts final welded on site and then um. Primed and painted on site as well to, to ensure that the, the coat, that there are no seam lines within the, the final structure. And then we chose, we chose aluminum for this size because of its ability to bend and also. It's natural property not oxidate with condensation. Uh, it will have an etching prime pass. Uh, two layers of, of a colored coat and then a three layers of a clear coat. Thank you. And, and this, I think this is a schematic design, so we'll, we'll definitely have to come back for like full engineering.
Thank you so much. Mission members. Tara, you have anything?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm in support of the project. I think the sculpture itself is beautiful. Um, they are leasing this particular lot from the city's land bank. They've been working with Donna Braggs from Community Development. Um, they do have a lease. Um, they just need to make sure that they keep up the insurance requirements and then of course. With the structural engineering, like um, how, what way they could support or anything and how is um, secure it to the ground. They're gonna come back for final. Um, I did have one question um, about the, I know it's aluminum welded, um, what. Made the decision to do Sherwin-Williams exterior paint instead of like outer coating? Was it a cost issue? Or what that.
Yeah, yeah, the part, the part of the, the, I mean, this is all public, so like the, the budget for the sculpture is ninety four thousand. Uh, outer coating would have been half that.
Math is not math.
Okay, I figured it was a lot, it was a lot.
So a lot of etching primer and a lot of coats.
Yeah, I figured it was.
Yeah.
And then the, the other, the other caveat with the, the lease was so that uh. We, we are intrinsically involved with the maintenance of it and we're looking at doing an annual maintenance program. Part of the things that was really interesting, like jumping into the public sphere is. The maintenance program is more important than the piece, you know, it's like, that's really what gets the longevity. And one of the things that we saw from uh, CMA is that all their sculptures go through like a really robust maintenance program where there's even partial disassembly. So one of the things that we're looking at are especially like that, those center smaller pedals. That can get dangerous with stalactite and other things is like, can we have a partial disassembly? And what kind of covering we can do through the winter seasons? When it gets like really bad, specifically with the wind. Uh, we still think like the red sculpture. On a snow field would be a sick visual.
Yeah.
So it's like, hey, we're not gonna close it for all winter, but, but when it gets crazy, you know, we'll be able to like tarp it and disassemble parcel.
And it's not in a design review district that um, I would personally recommend schematic approval.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, um. Madam Chair, I do know the selection of material does not make it easy because welding aluminum is not welding steel. So you, 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 that's a different process and a different certification, so I commend you for taking on that challenge. Um, as it relates to the coatings, um, Sherwin-Williams has ex, they have excellent exterior industrial coatings. I'll give you an example. I don't know what the, I'm gonna call it Jacob's Field because I can't take the name of it right now. Thank you. See that nostalgia stuff, right? But uh. There's all the still painted there, Sherwin-Williams, and it's never rusted, it's never um, flaked or peeled. If it's, if it's prepped properly while you're doing it in the shop and, and primed and, and coated, it should, it should stand up. So, by the way, this is some sculptured. I can't imagine how many man hours it's gonna take to. So has taken and will take, right? So uh, coolness to you guys.
Any other comments?
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. Having, having said that, I move to approve um, the garden spine sculpture as presented. Uh, with the caveat that um, the applicant looking to their insurance requirements for, for leasing the space and um. Provide, you know, um. Future foundations or any engineering drawings to support the, the, uh, the structure.
Can I second?
Motion in a second. Call the roll, please. Anthony.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
And Flight.
Yes.
You all excited to see this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right, well, we are moving on to our mandatory referrals. Uh, first up is ordinance number one, zero, seven, three, dash, two, five.
I was gonna say it's not Rick.
You don't have a Hawaiian shirt on.
Yeah, we did, it's a Hawaiian shirt day, man.
I know. Usually I wear like the floral of a Hawaiian tie on Fridays, so like kind of.
Oh, to, yeah, yeah, to match the uh, mocap ENC vibe. I actually have like a, like a solid six or seven up in rotation, but didn't, didn't wear it today. Good morning, everyone. My name is Julian Wilson. I'm a real estate project manager in the mocap division of real estate. And today we're presenting. In ordinance seeking legislative authority to sell city land that is determined to no longer be needed. For, for city uses or public use um, to a citizen who, who owns a property adjacent. To, to this property at zero, zero, nine, three, two, one, four, six. His name is Greg Snadle. Um, to the next slide, you can see a aerial view. So Greg Snadle's property is at zero, zero, nine, three, two, one, three, eight. To uh, the left of the highlighted property. If you scroll to the next slide, there's a street view. So where that, where that arrow is behind the arrow, that's where the parcel is. You can see it's just a green space with a bunch of trees. And so selling the property will put it back into productive reuse. And his plan is to turn it into a building and maybe do some like local, like community programming. It's just, you know, planting different crops and stuff back there. Um, so the buyer will purchase the property for the county appraised value of five hundred dollars and Councilwoman Mauer is in support of the sale. I'm on the roll today. I didn't know cul-de-sac existed in Cleveland, but uh, I learned something today. Panel Chair, um, I move to approve just number ten, seventy three, dash, twenty, twenty five as presented.
Can I second? Thank you.
Multiple seconds. Uh, multiple in the second. Call the roll, please. Anthony.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
And Flight.
Yes.
Thank you. Of course.
Check it out. All right, thanks, sir.
Uh, house that was like this part of the circle and we used to play like softball and all things, you know, maybe when those re-broke us, yeah.
Uh, next up, we have resolution number one, zero, nine, seven, dash, two, five. Uh, requesting Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio to determine and declare reasonable and safe uh, prima facade speed limit of thirty miles per hour on Lake Avenue.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Uh, I'm Cameron Roberts, Vision Zero Coordinator in mocap and capital projects under engineering and construction. Um, as was just stated, this is a resolution to reduce the speed limit on the city of Cleveland's portion of Lake Avenue from the posted speed limit of thirty five miles per hour to thirty miles per hour. Uh, this request is following a study that was conducted by the city, uh, which I'm going to briefly go through in some detail. Uh, but before I jump into that, I just want to share how this initiative aligns with the Division Zero initiative through the city. Uh, to reduce uh, traffic deaths and serious injuries um, citywide. Uh, and so the important piece here is that speed matters. Uh, we know that there is a direct correlation between speed and risk of injury. Uh, so the, the faster someone is traveling, uh, the more likely that someone is to be seriously injured or killed um, when struck. Um, and that's especially true for our vulnerable road users, especially pedestrians, which you can see uh, on the slide here. Uh, so studies have shown that when a pedestrian is struck at twenty three miles per hour, the risk of death is ten percent. Uh, but that begins to increase exponentially as the speed increases. Uh, so at forty two miles per hour, the risk of death is fifty percent. And at fifty eight miles per hour, um, it goes all the way up to ninety percent. Uh, next slide, please. And to put this into local perspective, over the last three full years between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four, over half of all deadly. Crashes in the city involved speeding as one of the contributing factors. Uh, so within the city's Vision Zero Action Plan, reducing speeds on our roads is listed as one of our key strategies uh, to work towards safer streets in Cleveland. Next slide. Uh, so going back to Lake Avenue, uh, this, the intent of this initiative is to. Reduce the speed limit by five miles per hour between West One Seventeenth to Detroit Avenue, uh, which you can see on the map here. Um, my understanding is that this has been a longstanding request in terms of reducing speeds on this section of road. Um, and in order to officially reduce the speed limit, it has to be approved by the Ohio Department of Transportation. Uh, with a formal uh, speed study being conducted. Um, and this was prompted partially by um, the city of Lakewood's uh, success in getting their section of Lake Avenue. Uh, redo's from thirty five miles per hour to thirty miles per hour early last year. Next slide, please. So the city, as part of this initiative, undertook a speed study by collecting data at five points along the corridor, which you can see listed as the points on the map here. So speed radar devices were set up and collected both speed, speed data as well as traffic counts as well. Next slide. This table represents the results of that study. I won't go into this in great detail, but the main takeaway from that study was that the majority of drivers traveling on Lake Avenue were already going below the posted speed limit of thirty-five. You can see through the highlighted numbers at the bottom of this table, the average speed was only twenty-nine point three, the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-three point one, and the fiftieth percentile was twenty-eight point two. Next slide. In addition to the speed study, some other factors that are incorporated into ODOT's review of this request include crash data and roadway context. So looking at crash data over the past three, four years, there were sixty-four total crashes on Lake Avenue with fifteen resulting in injury, as well as seven that were speed related. So this isn't necessarily one of Cleveland's high crash corridors, but these numbers are still above sort of averages for similar streets. In terms of roadway context, some other important factors that were considered here is that the look and feel of Lake Avenue has changed a lot over the past ten to fifteen years through the reduction of drivelanes along the corridor, added in bike lanes, as well as installing center median islands, all things that have just attributed to sort of traffic calming as well as increases in, you know, multimodal travel along Lake Avenue. Next slide. So the study that we conducted was submitted to ODOT and they have voiced their support for this request, noting that thirty miles per hour is a safe and reasonable speed limit. So this, the passage of this resolution is sort of the final step in getting their formal written approval. Once we get that, we are working on a communication strategy to notify community members of this upcoming change. And then we'll work with the city's traffic engineering team to swap out the speed limit signage. Happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, I'm so happy to see that you have coordinated this corridor speed limit with our partner, our adjacent neighbors. Because there's conditions in Cleveland, maybe not in Cleveland, but Cleveland, when I say Cleveland in general, where you drive and specifically in Cleveland Heights along Mayfield, where you don't know what speed you should be doing. And it becomes a speed trap, unfortunately. But this is very, very thoughtful, in my opinion. I do have a question concerning the global approach. Are we going to hear about other streets or are there interventions that might help protect us pedestrians from vehicles?
Yeah, so specifically for speed limit reductions, there are no other quarters that are specifically underway right now. But I would say that this is another tool in our overall toolkit that we can be using to, you know, traffic calm along the city. Obviously, this requires some discretion. It's not something that we can do for every single street. But in certain areas where it's appropriate, we could definitely do it or try to pair it with other things like speed tables and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Cameron, and thanks for the question. So the Ohio Revised Code allows a couple of different mechanisms for changing speed limits. So Cameron just walked us through a mechanism that requires the Speed Zone Study, and that is what we followed here. The Ohio Revised Code lays out appropriate speed limits for different contexts and different roads. And some of those involve adjacent land use and also control of intersections. So in this case, through this mechanism, it requires a resolution, which comes to Planning Commission through mandatory referral. But we did reduce the speed limit along Franklin Boulevard a couple of years ago as a result of changes to the intersection type along the corridor. And we are looking right now at land use along St. Clair corridor and how it corresponds with the statutory speed limits directed by the Ohio Revised Code. So there are a couple of different mechanisms that we're continuing to move forward on streets based on needs and applicability to try and get to this overall goal that Cameron, we're so glad Cameron has joined us and added capacity for around making our overall road network safer.
If I could build on that, just to speak at a different part of town, I get asked often, why is Triscuit Road thirty-five miles an hour when there's houses on it? And why is Lorraine Avenue in West Park twenty-five miles an hour when it's super wide and like bar lots and stuff like that? And the answer is Ohio Revised Code, like the limits are so people ask me to just change speed limit. Limits are set by Ohio Revised Code. Cities have to go through a rather elaborate assess one way or the other to change speed limits because we don't have local jurisdiction over speed limits. There is a statewide coalition working to amend state law to give greater discretion to municipalities to revise speed limits. Cleveland's very involved in that. But just something to know because it's frustrating. We're fortunate here that the data support reducing the speed limit. There have been cases where I know there's one in Avon where they attempted to expand a twenty-five mile an hour zone further. And the study supported raising the speed limit on the entirety of the corridor from twenty-five up to thirty-five because the way the system's designed now, it's looking at the speed that vehicles are traveling, not the context of what the speed should be. So if people are speeding, then it justifies the higher, or if people are going faster than we determine to be safe, then that justifies the higher speed limit in a way and makes it harder for us to lower the speed limit when we're trying to compel safety. So it's a very convoluted system and I think a high source of frustration for me, I can say. So I want to share that context for you and for anyone who's not here but maybe listening online because it is something I think that requires advocacy in Columbus because I don't think that basically a bureaucrat in Columbus should be deciding what the correct speed limit is on St. Clair Avenue. Like that's for us to decide. We know the local context. And likewise, you know, I think that there's rural areas where, you know, like they should be able to set their speed limit and appropriate and safe speed limit given that local context. This one-size-fits-all strategy is why you see these speed limits around town that don't feel appropriate. And then people just flagrantly violate them because they're not doing anything other than responding to their local context in many cases, so.
This is more of a curiosity question. I've only, I have not seen these in Cleveland proper, but in Brooklyn, the suburb, I noticed a street that has poles. So basically you're traveling like this down the street. Are you familiar with that form of like slowing people down? Because I had never seen that before.
I'm not familiar with that specific intervention. I don't know. I may defer to the director.
Yeah.
Or she can, yeah.
And in like strong, like certain areas.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so those are called chicane's. I know Lakewood piloted them on Woodward a while ago. We've been looking at those. They, we've talked about them on some of our streets that have lower traffic volumes and they can sort of be applied either to require both lanes to have to shift to navigate or that you can actually narrow it so much so that there's only one lane to pass through and drivers sort of have to pay attention and yield to each other. So we, we've done lane shifts in a couple of places but don't have an official narrow down to one lane anywhere in Cleveland yet, but Cameron's probably got some locations that would be good in the next couple of years.
I just want to add for humor, Lakewood started putting up speed tables and then also started putting up signs that said, only you can prevent speed tables. I think a very cost-effective way to not have to, just to threaten that if you guys don't stop, we're going to keep putting these up and then I think we should maybe follow suit. I, yeah, that's more piloted. I'm on board.
Okay. Now I've lost track of where we are. I think we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve resolution one ninety-seven dash twenty twenty-five as presented. I will second.
So we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Zucker.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
And like.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. We just have one administrative approval. Can you get a motion for that?
Madam Chair, move to approve administrative approval eleven oh eight twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Zucker.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
And like.
Yes.
You, I'm turning over to the director for any updates.
Thank you. I'll be very brief today. Just wanted to reiterate how important relatively new hires like Cameron are to the ability to do work and make progress on many initiatives that have come out of the Planning Commission over the last couple of years, especially in the mobility realm. We've had a number of new team members join and things like the speed limit reduction have been on the list to move forward for some time. And that extra capacity and talent here in City Hall is so valuable to being able to make those improvements. My only other note today is that ordinance nine eighty-four twenty twenty-five, which authorizes compensation for city planning commission alternates, is going to council committee next week. So we're continuing to move that through the process in order to onboard a couple of alternate members. I'll continue to keep you updated as we get to the posting point and then onboarding those members with the approval of council's appointments committee. But we're excited to be in front of the committee next week to take the next step.
All right. Well, that concludes our meeting. Thank you all so much. Have a great afternoon and weekend.